I'd call the June 26, 2019 Pickle's Board of Education Regular Meeting to Order. Mr. Hiddle, please call the roll.
Mr. Ford.
Here.
Mrs. McMackin.
Here.
Mr. Bostick.
Here.
Mr. Patrizio.
Here.
Mr. Height.
Here. Will you please stand and join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You've had an opportunity to review the minutes from the May 23, May 24, and April 1 special meeting of the board. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, can we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. If there's no further comments, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there any, are there any additions or changes to the agenda? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the agenda for tonight? Have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. If there's no further comments, please signify approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Legislative report, Mr. Patrizio.
Well, I understand they're in the process of adopting a budget. I don't really know the details at this point. Jeremy may have a better one than I do, but...
That's fine, because I was going to mention it when we started, but basically, they're in conference committee. Their hearing is supposed to start on tomorrow, Thursday, and they have to have something for the governor to sign by the end of 11:59 PM on Sunday, so we'll see what happens. I think everything is going to work out. They've got a few little things they need to iron out, so we should probably have something signed hopefully by, I'd say Friday, end of day Friday. We'll see. That's where we're at now.
Jeremy, have you, you've followed this. How do you think it's going to be? What's your anticipation at this point?
So, so the way I think the thing is going to end up is that there, we've had this sort of in the past where they froze our increase, so there won't be any changes in our funding on one hand. On the other hand, there's going to be some changes in funding, but it has to be spent specifically on certain items. So, there's a list of people that we have to work with to develop a plan for how we're going to increase student wellness and success. We're going to create a plan. We've got to figure out how we're going to spend that money, and then there's certain things that we're allowed to spend it on. So, it's going to be very directed funding that we're going to be accountable to say, here's what we've done with it. So, it'll be interesting to see what things that we do currently, because they're saying that it doesn't mean it has to be new programming. There are things that we already probably have in place that we can use to pay with, pay for, but we just have to see what that is. How does it match up with what we currently do versus what they're going to allow us to do, and then what other things maybe we need to tweak or change? So, it's something to learn. They don't have all that. Obviously, they can't even get to the point where they had the budget agreement, but as the details come out and Ohio Department of Education gives us some more directive of that, we just don't have it at this point. The language is, there's some language, but it's not specific enough for us to be able to go and match up with what we're doing. So, we're getting there. Just frustrating, because, I mean, we're waiting till the very last minute, and you're just like, seriously? We're getting closer and closer, and we've got budgeting that needs done, and all that kind of stuff, but we get used to this. It happens every two years.
Thank you.
Okay. Upper Valley Report, there really isn't anything. We met Monday with an agenda that looked almost identical to what we've got here before us tonight, so there's no... Our Skills USA kids are at the National Conference in Tennessee right now, doing very well. Haven't heard anything else. Okay, I have nothing on hearing of the public on agenda items, so we'll move to the Treasurer's report. How much of that have you already done?
Well, the initial, my report was just going to discuss through the fact that we should hopefully have something with the, with our budget bill coming. Otherwise, let's just move into the reports. Were there any questions about the regular fiscal reports that you received?
On the, and this is a building part of it, on the roofs for the high school, I know we've got the gym done, I know we're going to do the 500 wing, we're also going to do the part where the office is, is that right?
Yeah, so the, the last piece that's already been bid out, and they're just waiting for timing purposes because of the construction going on in the 500 wing. They should be starting mid-July if I remember correctly. I think it's like the 15, 16, something like that. They're going to be back on site, and they're going to start rolling through that. So, there's some areas above the stairwells that are around the gymnasium, the office space, as well as the 500 wing, and then they will finish the rest of the...
And that's the...
That's the final piece, and then the entire roof will be done.
And how much would, I mean, what's the total cost?
Uh, 1.9 million, close to 2 million. It was like 1.9...
The entire roof, right?
Mm-hmm. $2 million, basically, at the end of the day for, for the new roof.
You want to tell people how the 500 renovation is going?
Uh, I mean, and Clinton, Frank have both seen this, so I, I mean, if you want to speak up just the same, it's, it's, Rob, just the same. It's pretty amazing what they've gotten done right now. I mean, you go in there and it's, it's, you can just see it's starting to come together. So, they've gotten everything taken out. They've got the HVAC pipe ran, as far as the chilled and heated water is getting ran and re-insulated and sealed. They've got the drywall hung in the places that needs to be done. We've got, everything's being filled in and the block and all that, so basically, it'll look like it was brand-new. Like, we've got holes and all the old stuff, and, and we've been working on the floor. Right now, the, the floor is the question that we have, and they're testing different methods, because they've got air bubbles that are created when they're trying to put down the stained concrete floor. So, we're, I should say, it's an epoxy-type floor. So, they're, they're working on that issue, so... But other than that, everything's looking well. The transportation office is built. It's not mud and sanded and painted and all that. The painting should, they told me, start tomorrow in room 509, which is currently the Career Center's room, but that's the very furthest east room on the northeast corner of the building, and they're going to start working their way across. It's, it's coming together nicely. The handicap-accessible bathrooms are now in place, so that's a new thing for the high school, in the 500 wing, that they'll be able to have ADA-accessible stalls in that building, because we've taken the concrete blocks out of the way. So, it's just pretty cool, all the stuff that's coming together out there. So, it's coming together real nice.
I think the medical lab, the nursing lab has been roughed and sheet-rocked, so it actually looks like, you can start to see the shapes coming together now, which is really nice. You get to see that the other day, so...
Okay. The next thing on the agenda is the, again, we're just the government agency that's the taxing authority for the Pickle Public Library, and so, as part of the taxing agency of that, we do approve their annual budget, and so, that's what's attached with item number two. Item number three is our property and liability insurance, and we did get an increase of 4.7% or $4,577 this year from Liberty Mutual. There's some things that are pushing that. One of those is the, our umbrella policy. Price of that went up, and that's due to the absorbent amount of lawsuits that have been filed against people's umbrella policies. The other thing is that our auto went up. That's a, a whole nationwide issue. Auto policies, probably at your, even your own house, are going to be going up, because that's a loser right now for insurance companies. So, those are the two biggest changes that, that we receive, but $4,500 isn't that bad in the grand scheme of things. I've been trying to keep it under 100,000. When I came here, we were paying close to 300,000, so it's just been a goal of mine to try to keep it under 100, but it's 101, 148, so it is what it is. Next year, we will go back out for bid, and we'll start checking pricing again. We've got people who want to get in on it, and we'll see what happens from there.
Okay, anything else?
Um, these are just the basic things that we do in the June meeting. I know mine, mine is busy, because we're at the fiscal year-end. Approve the appropriation adjustments for FY 2019. So, item number four, basically, gives me the authority to make any of the changes that we need to make to be able to balance and close the books for the end of the year. Item number five is the temporary appropriations for fiscal year '20, so that's sort of weird to say, that we're preparing for 2020, but that will do it 50% of the previous appropriations. Item number six allows me for the fiscal year '20 to invest district funds. Item number seven is to establish the Board Service Fund, because that's an annual in an amount of $30,000, which we've done consistently since I've been here and prior to my arrival, and that allows for the boards to have, for our Ohio School Boards Association Conference, as well as teacher appreciation and those kind of things. So, it's sort of the fund that the board uses to do those things. And then, the only funded fund transfer that we have on here is a transfer for up to $2 million from the general fund to the permanent improvement account, again, to continue the maintenance and repairs that are going on at the high school. As we're approaching the end of the fiscal year, I think that we could close with close to $2.5 million, but I'm, I'm only budgeting to move $2 million this summer, and those are all the things I have.
Wasn't there recognition that your office got?
I don't normally talk about those things. The, the GFOA, the Government Fiscal Officers Association, we, we did win the award for fiscal reporting excellence from GFOA again this year, so I just received that recognition. What was it? I was on vacation Thursday or Friday, I think. I was, I was out of town, so I don't know for sure when it got here, but I came back, and it was on my desk, and I appreciate the emails, and thank you for that. So, again, it's not something that I do on my own. Everybody has a stake in it, because if one of us messes it up, then we're all in trouble, so...
I was just saying, make sure you share with your staff that we appreciate everything they do.
Absolutely. I can't do it without them.
Anything else you need to add? Okay, if not, can we have a motion to approve the Treasurer's agenda?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, Mr. Hiddle, please call the roll on this one.
Mr. Patrizio.
Aye.
Mr. Bostick.
Aye.
Mr. Height.
Aye.
Mrs. McMackin.
Aye.
Mr. Ford.
Aye.
Superintendent's report, Mr. Lyons.
So, we'll start out with the bullying report semi-annually. This is the time of the year where we do that second report to update you from the second semester. Total numbers that came in as far as reports that were done electronically through our system were 82, with the bulk, again, being at the Pickle Central Intermediate Building, which is, if you want to take a look at that, we've encouraged specifically that group of students to use the system to report. So, so what that team has done is institute their bullying assistance team. So, once they've made a determination that they have a situation like that, it goes to that team, and they follow that through. And I'm happy to report that all the incidents that were reported in that building were resolved with a positive outcome through the use of that team. So, just to give you a rundown ultimately of what we saw with, with the bullying reporting. At PCIS, although there were 68 reported incidents, 18 of those were anonymous. Now, the system works so that you can report anonymously, and that can be beneficial, but that's also very difficult for our principals to, to find all the information that they need. Out of that remaining 50 reports, 17 reports went to the bullying assistance team. They monitor that, and Heath was kind enough to share that data, so I could see over time how they monitor that and look for a result. Out of that total report, they ended up with five cases that were ultimately determined to be bullying, and appropriate consequences for each one of those were, were issued, as well as ongoing monitoring of those incidents. At PJHS, the junior high, they had nine reports. Three were anonymous and zero actual cases. At the high school, they had 14 reports. 13 were anonymous. That's how it goes at the high school typically, and one was determined to be bullying. At both primaries, it's interesting, because you'll get, if you get a report, it's usually because a parent reports it and they have that conversation. We're encouraging those folks to get in and use the system, so we have that documentation and ongoing monitoring. We had one reported for the second semester for both buildings, and that case was not determined to be bullying. So, again, it's encouraging that, I think that you've seen over the years, the increase in reports, because our kids are using the system. What we found, though, that most of those incidents probably shouldn't go into bullying reporting, but the student incident reporting system that they have access to. And again, for all parents and students, that's access right on the front page of our website, top-left corner, two spots. When you go in, it gives you the definition of bullying. Again, any intentional, persistent, repetitive, written, physically communicated, those kinds of things for bullying. It gives you the definition, and then it prompts you to move on if what you have to say or, or report is in fact bullying. So, again, I'm encouraged by what, what our, our building leadership has done. That process looks like when you report, it goes into the system, student or parent reports it, and then we're all notified. So, the building-level leadership, as well as Dwayne and I are both notified, and then we follow up with them to see what the outcome is. So, nobody ever wants a situation of bullying, obviously, but if our kids are using the system, our parents are using the system, it makes us aware, and we can actively take care of whatever situation that is, so...
What if someone submits something anonymously, and it actually is a pretty bad bullying case, but there's no kid's name, there's no parent's name? How do you proceed after that? What, what do you do?
You go with what you have. So, usually, in many of the anonymous cases, and these guys can correct me wherever I'm wrong, but you see something in there that you can follow up on. Usually, an anonymous will throw a name of some sort out there that'll give you a place to start. It's just more difficult, because you don't have a victim. So, even though you're talking to a student that might be involved in something, you still don't have a victim to provide support for.
Right.
Because, and that's the biggest piece. When we, when we say that, we, we know we have to be punitive with discipline, but we have to provide the supports for the student who felt like they were impacted somehow. So, sometimes, we can get to the bottom of it. Unfortunately, with the anonymous reports, it's very difficult to get there. Any other questions on, on the report?
Anything else to add tonight?
Yep. Thank you.
Okay. On the superintendent's agenda, move along with that.
Recommend board approval of the attached list of donations to the Pickle City School District, and you have that attached there. And just a couple to highlight. The first one there, the No Kid Hungry Program to Pickle Central Intermediate. Amazing, and to the tune of $5,000 that goes to make sure that our, all of our kids get to eat breakfast every single day. And particularly, we have a couple other ones in there, but Kona Ice has been a great partner for a lot of our, our buildings out there. Our kids get a treat. They use it, I know, as a reward at different places for PBIS, and then a percentage of that money that's, that's paid for for that goes back into the building. That's a nice one, too. Obviously, our kids and our teachers love it, so that's a, that's a great one. So, thank you to all those people and groups who have donated. And then, recommend board approval of the attached list of grants. That's the next attachment, and again, to the tune of, I think we had six different grants from the Pickle Community Foundation that supported our libraries, our classrooms, different things like that. Pickle Community Foundation, rather. And then, one additional grant for $1,500 for the Miami County Foundation to PCIS for their author who came to visit the school. So, thank you again. Can't say enough about those partnerships with Pickle Community Foundation and Miami County Foundation. And then, recommend board approval of the attached list of outdated educational items. That is included in the agenda as well, and that's for disposal. Those are reviewed by curriculum to make sure that we're not getting rid of something that could be of value, but as you know, we accumulate things over time, and unfortunately, we have to go through and get rid of all that, too. Recommend board approval of the attached list of student handbooks. As you know, and Dwayne's mentioned it over the years, Darrell kind of heads that up for the district, works with the other principals to make sure that all the things that are supposed to be in the student handbooks are there, and then they roll those out this time of the year. So, at this point, I don't have anything else for the agenda items.
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions for Mr. Lyons? Okay, if not, can we have a motion to approve the superintendent's agenda?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, well, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Personnel agenda.
Thank you. I would like to start out with saying a couple thank yous. Josh Kaufman, who spent several years here as a principal, has decided to move on, and just wanted to thank him for his service and, and the work and dedication that he provided at Pickle Central Intermediate Building for that time. And also, John Schofstall, Assistant Principal of Pickle High School, has, has made the decision to move to, to get back with his wife ultimately, after giving us a year apart from her, and that was great for him. So, thank you to, to all the work and time and dedication that the, both of them have spent with Pickle City Schools. With that, before I introduce some, some new administrators, I would like to have Heath come up, because I believe one of his brand-new teachers here is here, and he's going to introduce her. And Amanda, you can come on up, too, and help do the introduction.
It is really my pleasure to introduce Amanda Whitehead. Amanda will be coming from us from Bethel. She'll be teaching sixth grade science. Mike Chaffer moved up to the junior high. The great thing that stood out about Amanda during our interview was just the positive energy and the great love she has for kids, and not only through the science curriculum, but also teaches them how to be better people, and she struck a nerve with us, and we knew we had to have her. So, we're very fortunate to have her on our staff this year, and we're excited to see the new things that she'll bring to PCIS.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Amanda. Appreciate that. Heath, why don't you stay up? You're welcome to bring your, bring your family up. I see some, some familiar faces out there, but you, you, we've mentioned our principals who are leaving, and...
Do you want me to introduce Lindsey?
You can go ahead and introduce Lindsey.
Okay.
First, but we have had some significant changes in that building, so you're going to see some brand-new faces, the exception of Megan. Go ahead and welcome, welcome.
Also, tonight, I'd like to introduce Lindsey Mullenkamp from the high school. She brought her family. Another great opportunity for us to have someone with a guidance background come in an administrative role. I know Lindsey's really been working hard toward this, and this has really been one of our goals. You know, Lindsey brings another great positive attitude, an infectious positive energy with the guidance, the scheduling. The success-bound piece at the high school is often rolling on, and as it kind of filters down, she's really going to help us generate our program. We're very excited about that. Probably what stood out so far with Lindsey and our other assistant, Megan Askins, is their work ethic. There's been, what, three times already this summer that I've had to tell you to go home? Lindsey, it's time to go home. You've been here since 8 o'clock in the morning. You've been working super-hard. Go spend some time with your family, because when school starts, you know, it's going to require a little bit more of your time, and now's the special time to, you know, get rejuvenated, get recharged, and spend some great time with your family. So, if you'd like to introduce your family?
Sure. If you guys wouldn't mind coming on up. This is my son Everett.
Everett.
He'll be a fifth grader.
Hi.
This is my husband Phil, and this is Maddie. She's four. She's very, both my kids are very, very tall, as you can see. He's from St. Henry, so that's where they get the height from. So, we're very excited for this and grateful for this opportunity. So, thank you all for supporting me and my journey, and I'm really looking forward to just working really hard and making this district even better. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsey.
Thank you, Lindsey.
And Heath, obviously, you know Heath. He, we have been blessed to have him as administrator of the district.
You brought somebody, didn't you?
Yeah.
And he brought his family, and he's been a coach for us, a teacher for us successfully for years, assistant principal, and we're blessed to have him in this, moving into this role pending board approval tonight.
So, obviously, any good coach, any good administrator, you know, any good person knows that, number one, it starts with your wife. I have a great support system here. My mother-in-law, a great support system there, and Nolan, third grade. Parker, he's going to be with us next year, fourth grade. And Reddy, how old are you? Four. He's four. Just very humbled and excited for this opportunity, and, you know, my predecessor, Mr. Kaufman, you know, he, he set the groundwork for some great programming, and if you were, come to our school next year, I think the biggest thing you're going to see is kind of our conversations that we have, kind of the infectious, and I've talked with Lindsey, and she already has it. Megan's saying, just a relentless positivity to attack the challenges we face in today's world as it deals with education. I think coming into the building, you're going to be able to hear us talk about our love for our kids, love for our parents, love for our community members and our partnerships, and once we develop that love and we make it, make it known that our students and our parents and our community knows that we love them, we'll be able to take that school to the next step, and to do stuff that surrounding communities will once again be coming in, wondering what we're doing as we take our kids to the next, the next level.
Thank you, Heath. Congratulations. Thanks, everybody, for being here.
Thank you.
Heath did mention Megan, and Megan Askins came again from the high school as a, as a biology teacher for years for us successfully, and, and again, we're blessed to be able to have people that are moving into administrative positions that are ours, and as much as that hurts the places that they, that they were in, our district continues to grow because of them moving into these positions, so we're excited. Megan wasn't able to be here tonight. She's on vacation, so congratulations to her as well, and to this new team. We're excited. I know it's pending board approval, but they have been working for the last week or so in there, because, because that's where I have to go find them now to get them, so... Because they're all in a, in a, in a group, and they're always working on master schedules, so congratulations to that team. Outside of that, I don't have anything else for the personnel agenda.
Do we have any questions? There's a lot, a lot, a lot involved on this one day. Have any questions? Anything on there?
No. I'd like to also thank Abby Uitt. I know she resigned to take care of her family issues, and she's a wonderful teacher.
Wonderful teacher, and, and just as a side note there, she has shared that she's interested in coming back to be subbing, potentially even some long-term things if we have availability there, so we're excited for that, because she's an amazing teacher.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the personnel agenda?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and multiple seconds. Mr. Hiddle, please call the roll.
Mr. Ford.
Aye.
Mr. Patrizio.
Aye.
Mrs. McMackin.
Aye.
Mr. Bostick.
Aye.
Mr. Height.
Aye. Motion carries. Congratulations, everybody. Now, you've come to work legitimately. We have no old business?
Okay, the first item under the new business is to approve the agreement with Eminem Automotive for our bus maintenance and mechanical. Moving out of the board office, old board office down at the Decker Building, we're going to be moving all of our repairs to Eminem Automotive to be done, and so, this is just that agreement that we will do for the next three years. The second item, any questions about that? The second item on there is a change order with Archon Builders out on the 500 Wing project. That is to cover the transportation office that's being built within the building, so it's sort of, it's going to be its own building within a building kind of thing. So, it'll have exterior access, so the public can still get into the, into the area where the transportation office is located, but will not have access to the rest of the building. So, it does create that security from the rest of the building. So, there'll be an entranceway at the back on the south side of the high school, and there'll be parking and an entrance, basically, for, for people who want to visit the transportation office. So, that is what that change order is for. And I'll go ahead and hit the number four that's in the Neola Policy, which is dealing with, this, this will be the first read for that, but that is dealing with the, the purchasing agreement for food service. It needs to be in place, basically outlining the whole process that we use to purchase food if we don't use an EPC, a consortium kind of a deal. So, we never do it. We always use the EPC, but we have to have the policy in place to pass our procurement audit for food service, and so that's what this is for. So this is just the first read for that.
Okay, so we don't.
Number, number three is the, by any review of that policy. It has to be reviewed every two years. There are no changes to that policy for us, with the exception of it fits perfectly with what we're trying to do with success bound or what we have done success bound from the high school down. So that's a nice piece to have.
You're right. We got to go back and vote on this.
Now, do we need any votes on any of these tonight?
Number one and number two.
Okay, do we have a motion to, to approve number one and number two?
Yeah, let's do them separately.
Do them separately?
Yep.
All right, okay, for number one, for the Eminem Automotive?
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Hiddle, please call the roll.
Mr. Ford.
Aye.
Mrs. Mc Mackin.
Aye.
Mr. Patrizio.
Aye.
Mr. Bostick.
Aye.
Mr. Height.
Aye. And a motion for the change order for Archon Builders.
So move.
Have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Mrs. Mc Mackin.
Aye.
Mr. Patrizio.
Aye.
Mr. Ford.
Aye.
Mr. Bostick.
Aye.
Mr. Height.
Aye. Motion carries. Before we go on, if anybody has an urge to go home?
We always give you the opportunity to not stay for the meeting, but it's almost the end. It's up to you all. You're welcome to stay. You're welcome to go. But we're going to keep going.
Looks like they're staying, all right. We do have, I have notification from Mr. Steve Fraser, would like to address the board on a non-agenda item. Remind him that as per board policy, the statement is five minutes in length.
Thank you. I have a name, Steve Fraser, 102 Janet Drive. Affiliated with girls across our track and field. The topic to address is the release or relieve of my duties as head coach. I've coached various teams at Pickle City Schools since 1979. Pick, our junior high football, junior high track, girls' basketball, assistant track coach, assistant high school cross-country coach, head coach of cross-country, head coach of girls. After these years, I was asked to, I was asked to not to come back as head coach of girls due to a couple incidents. Incident number one, a parent was not pleased with the way I was coaching his son. It was quite obvious at the meeting that we, with, with the athletic department and a member of the administration, they agreed with the parent. I would, would like to note that this parent is also a varsity coach in a different sport. During the meeting, I felt like no support from the athletic department or the administration. Instead, they let the, they let the parent tell me how bad I was in, in the situation. I felt like I did not have a chance to defend myself or slightly benefit or slightly benefited or debate my, my circumstances. I made a mistake. Number two, I made a mistake entering an athlete in the league meet. As soon as I found out, I made the, that I made the error, I immediately admitted my mistake to the athletic department, the athlete and the athlete's parents. Most coaches have, have been at fault at some time in their coaching career, not saying that it shouldn't be frequency occurrence. But I was given a consequence for, for what I felt was first-time offense, a first-time mistake in my career. Following the meeting, the athletic department of Pickle City Schools told me that I was suspended indefinitely without compensation. And he said it was supported by the administration.[1632.61]